But we are already. I'm ready for the fact.
Yeah.
That's in years.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, five, day difference.
Discussion.
First, the word of the land.
Then, yeah, let's go. Sounds really good.
Yeah. I can honestly say.
Yeah. What's that?
Rock.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah. That's why he thought.
And the other things we've got, like, I see, I see. It's definitely different just because that's a. We got all groups. That's why I don't get your plan. I think some. Well, right now. It's gonna be. See a grab. Yeah. What else is going on?
Nick, can you hear us?
Anyway.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
What do you do on that? All of the stairs in the back.
Well, what I know is that's. That's what I'm already looking up here to. It's like, I think. Nate, it's gonna be a little bit. And then, and then we're. It's a lot of it. There you have. Not since I was being construction. I see, I'm literally. I'm very concerned. Okay, so still people. You're fighting. Sure. I'll give you. In times mutual. Just that. It's really. Can we? For. Great. Sure.
So you go to what, Alain's?
Yeah, I'll recommend that. Thank you.
Okay. That's like. So must. So. Visual.
I'm like. I was asking, maybe something. I did learn. And I thought. We're seeing this. That's right.
Yeah.
But that's, that's why I'm here. Yeah. So you have a lot of beautiful. Chalk.
So. Cover.
It's so. Yeah. It's that. You hear?
Really.
I don't.
So. Yeah.
That's the only thing that.
Oh, hey, how you guys?
I find a little bit more about her.
He's a good. He's a good. I've always liked. Yeah. Yeah, they're all like. No, I just wanted something to be able to tell the day of fire. I don't see. Here's what's up. You know? It's like a very, like, we had never had that happen. And it's all of a sudden. All fucking days, this is what happens. Like, it was like when he sent me the picture. Well, no, but I mean, he said that our real estate sent her the picture. I said, are you fucking kidding me? Like, of all days, it happens to both. Like, it makes no sense what's up. Yes. As I did today, like, this morning. Like, that's why I don't understand. Yeah, like this one.
Don't forget, I turned my.
Can you hear us, Nick?
Yep, I can hear you good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let me call to order the meeting of the Highlands Town Board of Commissioners for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The first item is always in our meeting will be a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Now, if we'll all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Our next item on the agenda is a statement of conflict of interest. I call the statement to the attention of the board members. If anyone has a conflict of interest on any business item that we will address tonight, it is incumbent that you share that conflict. The next item is the public comment period. And I just want to, first of all, introduce and express our appreciation and welcome to Representative Carl Gillespie, who is with us tonight. I want to say this on behalf of the board. Representative Gillespie has been a good friend of municipalities in Western Carolina, especially Highlands, in going to Raleigh and making sure that towns, counties in this part of the state, which is sometimes forgotten in Raleigh. He, along with Senator Corbin, our representatives, make sure that we get a fair share of the resources to here in Western Carolina. So Representative Gillespie, if you'd like to say some words, I'll be happy to open the floor to you. I know you're back from a long session.
I think probably the best thing I can do is say no. Because I think. We're talking when you come from the left. I just thank you for all that y'all do. Um, we have the folks there that something I'm gonna get done this summer is go to each and every one, once, one trip. Not every four people, but every town board meeting and every county fish meeting. Uh, because y'all know, I'll get a fish or I very much fly. So, I think that's where some of the next decision is made. So, that's why I'm here to y'all. Y'all are on the tour for this summer. Uh, but thank you for being a great partner. And that's, that's the way I knew this, it's a partnership. You're a great partner. Uh, and I know it's important.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Does anyone else have a public comment that they'd like to make tonight? If so, you'll come down and address the boards to state your name for the record. Hearing no public comment, let us now move to the next item. That is to review and approve the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Thank you very much. The next item would be the approval of the June nineteenth regular meeting minutes. Do we have any changes, corrections, or clarifications?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item will be reports, starting with the mayor's report. So let me go over a few things. Want to address something that has happened in town. It's not a big deal, but it's something that concerns me. And that is, you know, we have inspectors, town inspectors, in all of our staff and so forth. We've just had a recent situation where several of our citizens have, in a way, not accepted a decision on the part of our, our staff. And they've gone to the state and asked it, asked for inspections and so forth. That is fine. That's well and good. I will say, as the mayor, though, I feel like, once those inspections are given by the state, I think it's incumbent on my part to let the public know, one way or the other, what was the outcome of those inspections? And I will be monitoring the situation as we go through that process.
Can we, can I ask for some specifics there?
At least what kind of inspections are we talking about?
One is on erosion control and one is on sewer control. So those are the two items. All right. The next thing that I was gonna say is the town out. I had one of my friends today, I was doing recycling, and they were talking about Hurricane Helene and, and the, you know, the problems we had getting information out and so forth. And I kind of was surprised and said, do you have the new town out? And he said, what's that? And I said, that is our new way of addressing the issue that you were talking about, us getting out information during bad weather or any kind of emergency. And I just want to, again, emphasize that if you know people in town that have those kind of questions, please encourage them to get that free town out, because I think it's really gonna help in connecting with the residents about critical information. Couple of other things, and then I will turn it over. Um, and I'll just say this, and Mr. Weller, you're aware of this. There's a business now that's posting, the name of their business is Town Hall. We're already getting confusion on some people thinking that, why, why are you people moving to the Town Hall? We're not. And we'll continue to operate where we are, but that will be a new business. And I hope we can make sure that no one gets too confused and drops off any bill payer thing at the new restaurant. But that's all I have to say. And then finally, I had the honor of going to the Western North Carolina Firefighters Association Meeting last night to welcome the firefighters from Western Carolina. They were at our fire station. A few years ago, they had this meeting in Highlands, and we had it at the rec park. But with our new fire department, they were able to pull the trucks out and have the meeting right there. I thank them for coming. Welcome to Highlands. And sincerely, you know, we need to always support our first responders. They're the front line of safety for our citizens. And it was a very good meeting, and I appreciate our fire chief and staff for hosting that important meeting. And then finally, I'll be having my mayor's community coffee tomorrow at eleven o'clock at the Hudson Library. And the folks that we just met with concerning the Boys and Girls Club, they'll be sharing the plans and ideas about relocating or locating a new Boys and Girls Club here in Highlands with the general public. That's all I have. I will now turn it over to the commissioners. If you have any updates or information.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here. One is, I'm gonna talk more about it when we get to the agenda item number ten. Uh, but wanted to say that last, last week, I attended the county commission meeting, and they agreed to fund our playground for an, in, in amount of another fifty thousand dollars. So, um, we'll be talking more about that later in the agenda. The other thing I wanted to plug is the scholarship golf tournament. Um, just a reminder that this is our fiftieth year of the scholarship fund, not, that's the scholarship fund, not the golf tournament. And that'll be held in September at Coliseum Club. I want to say it's the fifteenth, um, fifteenth of, of that month on a Monday. And we're, so we're looking forward to that. And given it's the fiftieth year, we're trying to make that, this the biggest year yet. So we're looking for whole sponsors, any, and just sponsors in general for that, for that event. Um, you can just let me know if anybody has any interest in that. And then the last thing I just wanted to, just to alert the board, too, is that I've had a number of complaints from businesses, as you know, last month, we voted to change the, the parking organs. And, and it was particularly with businesses that are on the end of Main Street that backs up Town Hall. So on Oak Street, the parking along there, there's several businesses along there that don't agree with that, and they feel there's some safety issues there with employees that work early in the morning and having to work, having to walk further to work at, you know, whatever that is, five thirty, six o'clock in the morning. So I just want the board to be aware of that and if there's more to come from that. So that, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other commissioner reports? Commissioner, can I kind of address those concerns in?
Absolutely.
One way. We've heard those similar concerns, and some people thought that we just arbitrarily did this very quickly. And in fact, I remember Commissioner Patterson asked to consider that at a meeting. We had a discussion, followed by another agenda item where we had a further discussion, and the decision was to send it to the planning board for their review. When they came back, then, at that time, we adopted the recommendations from the planning board for the most part. So I, I'm not trying to, I don't want to come across as, I'm upset, but I wish that folks could, could track what we're doing.
I agree.
For example, and I will say this, you know, we were talking about changing the parallel parking on, on Fourth Street. We were about to do that, but some of the merchants came and said, that's not working for us. We'd, we'd like to keep it the same way and can, you can, have you consider moving over the line? Well, we did that. So I just, I just encourage the residents and people, if they see that we're about to take action on something, I encourage them to come and let us know.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing, that's part of the education process that I have, I've alerted those businesses to. But nonetheless, I've met with those businesses and, and heard their concerns and told them that I'd be passing that on to the board.
Thank you. Okay, very good. All right. Our next report would then be the town manager.
Well, we've got good news. The Department of Environmental Quality has issued the notice to award the bid for Dog Mountain. So.
Praise be.
Five years, Representative Gillespie helped us get that funding in two thousand and twenty-one's budget. So we're finally gonna be able to move forward with that project. Still, our enterprise is a little bit, as y'all know. Uh, so hopefully, construction will start in September.
And Representative Gillespie's miracles always happen. After all that time, when we sent out the bids, it came in slightly under the bid. So we have a contingency fund. So that's good news. I guess, thank you.
Also, the Little Bear Pen caution light, they were unable to bore the conduit in, so they're gonna have to go overhead. As you know, we've got some electrical work being done out on that part of town. They're gonna probably wait until they stream the wire and light that up. So it's gonna be a few more weeks before they get that in operation, it sounds like. That's all I have.
All right. Good, thank you. Okay. Item number eight is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions concerning the consent agenda, what's in the packet?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
For Josh, I guess. It's concerning the, the SRF grant funding?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it was to remaining money that we needed to complete the water improvement improvements. How much money is that?
It's the total with the completion of the improvements and the generator, I think, was one point three eight six million would be total.
So one point three eight six is what?
Almost one point four million total with the generator is what we're lacking.
Oh, what we're lacking?
From the grant, yes.
Okay. And this is, this is a no interest loan, such a revolver fund?
There, there is, there's monies out there, and I talked to the Southwestern Commission. They said that they felt like that it was, it would be a good project. It has to show resiliency. It's through the Helene recovery funding that has been issued. Uh, also, it has to support small businesses downtown, which it would with the extra filter and the generator, because the generator is aging. So we're, there was a deadline to get something submitted. So we talked to WK Dixon, who's working on the water plant improvements. And they put this together to send in. So this is part of the pre-application for them to tell us whether or not we can submit the full application.
Okay, so it's not, I thought it was a revolving fund or something, so.
It, it, it potentially is. So there's, there's money and there's, there's low interest or no interest loans. I don't know exactly.
So we're not telling which one we're getting?
We, we don't know yet. We're, there's a lot of monies available. Um, and so we're hoping to get that to, to add to what we already have.
We'll appreciate any help we can get.
Well, I understand, but I mean.
It does list.
There's a difference between a grant and a loan, no interest loan.
We're gonna have to have a loan anyway. We knew that going in, because we didn't have the money to completely cover it. Now we've, now we've added the generator. So, you know, hopefully, there's, there's money in there.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Submit.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. Our next item will be a public hearing, Unified Development Order, Amendment, Sections two point three and eight three. Just some background. We started this process with the public hearing at our last meeting. We needed to make some adjustments and corrections. So we're basically having the restart of this public hearing. So Michael Mathis, would you give us your statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at last month's board meeting, Commissioner Weller asked the town attorney to amend Section eight point three point two of the Unified Development Ordinance and define and regulate any new attic in a commercial building constructed in all commercial zoning districts. The new section is as follows, eight point three point two attic standards. Any new attic in a commercial building constructed in a commercial zoning district shall meet the following standards. The roof rafters shall bear directly on the attic floor system, with the exception of a dormer whose length shall not exceed fifty percent of the underlying wall structure. There shall be no exterior knee walls as part of additional habitable area. And then the third one was actually added from what the previous ordinance was, and it's any attic used as an apartment shall have a minimum of six hundred gross square feet. Additionally, Section two point three of the UDO will be amended to include a definition for attic and habitable space. And those are actually in the, the other document you got on page one twenty-six. Just trying to see if we. The revision's actually on one twenty-seven. Yeah, actually, or yeah, one, one twenty-nine would be those definitions, page one twenty-nine, that part B, Section two point three. But I was gonna add, whether the proposed ordinance amendments are approved or denied tonight, the motion should include a statement of consistency with the town's community plan, which is also in your package.
Okay. And, and basically, Michael is giving us update on what the staff in our town attorney did to make those adjustments when we were having that public hearing. So what I'd like to do now is call for motion to open the public hearing. We'll have a motion to open it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. And then I will now open it up to public comments, if anyone would like to make a public comment. Hearing no public comments, I will now ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Submit.
All right. And then the final thing would be council action.
Move to close.
Okay. And second?
Yep.
All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Michael. All right. Item number ten. Excuse me.
We have a council action now. We just closed.
Oh, it's closed. I'm sorry. Okay. Now let's do the council action.
We make a motion to approve as presented in this package and that it is in keeping with our comprehensive plan.
Very good.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now let's move on to item ten, the Highlands Playground Request. Commissioner Steen.
Okay, first, I want to just kind of give you all a recap of where we are here. So last week, as I said earlier in the commissioner reports, I attended the Macon County Commissioners Meeting. And thanks to Commissioner Sherrill, we were able to get another fifty thousand dollars from Macon County. So that brought the total that Macon County brought, uh, is donating toward this, or funding this program to four hundred thousand dollars. So in the, in the meantime, through private donations, we've raised a total of seven hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents. And the town obviously is generous enough to give two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And I want to, so what I'm, my ask for the town is, given the fact of how this grant process has worked and has failed, and the fact that this continues to sort of drag on the fundraising, is I'm asking the, the town board to consider giving the playground another fifty thousand dollars. If we were to get another fifty thousand dollars from the town, and keep in mind, too, in the last week, I was able to secure a fifty thousand dollar matching grant from an individual in Highlands. In addition to a ten thousand dollar donation from an individual in Highlands, that would bring the total of what we're, that's another base. If we get the town and then these other donations, that's another sixty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollar, in addition to that fifty thousand dollar matching grant, which would bring us a total of, and bear with me here, that would almost, that would bring us to one point four six. And what we're trying to do is get to one, one point six is basically what we, ideally what we want to have. If we can get to one point four five, that would give us enough room, uh, room to start the site prep, which I think is important, and then also purchase the equipment. But we also need to recognize that there's purchases beyond that that are gonna be important. One would be fencing, for instance. Um, and then there's some other soft costs in there as well. So before I get into any more, what I'm asking for the town board to consider is another fifty thousand dollar contribution to the playground, bringing the total to three hundred thousand dollars as opposed to two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So we're gonna have to bid that, right?
It's the, the plate, you mean, dig it? You're gonna bid. Bid. Um, well, you want me to address that? Based on information Josh found today, we are not, because all three of the companies that we've been talking to about this all have state contracts. So we can actually move forward with one of them, similar to like buying a vehicle or things like that. So we're still gonna negotiate and talk to and run through the plans, but we don't have to bid per se if that's, you know, from a terminology, we can actually negotiate the contract, which is fantastic.
That's fantastic news.
Goes through the state construction office?
Yeah, they're, they're an approved vendor. They got a state contract.
I mean, we have to go through the state construction office?
No, it's, it's basically the same as like when, when they had to fix Little Bear Penn's road.
Yeah, because they already had a contract, they could just tack it on.
Basically, you got it backing or whatever.
Makes it cheaper for us.
Yeah. But all three of the companies we've been talking to, that's the case. So we're not gonna have to go through that formal process. And that would be difficult to do anyway, because all three companies have their own proprietary product. So you can't really, it's, it's not, can't be a bid situation. It's never gonna be apples to apples. So.
But at the same time, yeah, with the same time, we have three bids from three different companies on playground. And that's something that Josh has all those, and at the next, maybe at the August meeting is when I'm hoping that we can share that with the board and recommend our plan of going forward from that. So, but like, first, I would like to ask the board for the fifty thousand dollars.
So, so those companies would be doing the site prep, too?
Well, they, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend potentially, like, who around town that's in that business that wants to be involved potentially, that they would go with them, because it would all be under their contract as a GMP by the end. But, you know, whether it be, well, I won't mention names yet, but if there's other companies that want to be involved, and then they can negotiate, they'll be with Compan or, or Carolina Parks and Player, whoever the final one is. So, but yeah, they will have to do, it'll be one price, basically, moving forward with a GMP.
So Josh, can you reach in your pocket and give us another fifty thousand dollars?
He says there's plenty. I just heard him say it.
He gave him a cookie.
And again, with, uh, the, the board that pays two hundred fifty thousand is to be three hundred thousand. So at some point, there'll need to be a budget amendment, and, you know, the funds allocated out now and just be simply.
And.
An agreement to fifty thousand dollars.
To also understand, for anybody that might be in the paper, be in, wherever the papers, when we, even if, even hopefully, when the town gives the additional fifty, we still need another hundred to hundred and forty.
Correct, yeah.
So we're not done fundraising. We don't want people to think we're done. We're still gonna be hitting up a lot of people, but.
But it's time to get going. We've been talking about this.
We gotta get it, it's, yeah.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, we're close enough that it, it seems like a done deal.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, it's happening.
Wanted the details of.
And so, so my, my, my goal and dream for this whole thing is for us to kind of work these details out in the next month or two and, uh, basically, you know, be able to sign something with the Compan company and get this equipment ordered. I'd like to start site prep sometime in fall, order the, order the equipment in fall. And if we can get all that accomplished by like mid-September, we could have a Memorial Day grand opening.
Next season.
That's cool.
Next year.
Next year.
So I'll make the motion that we find another fifty thousand dollars to up our pledge to three hundred thousand all accessible playground on the recreation park.
Second.
Second. We have a second. Motion. I'll call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
And the other thing I just wanted to like mention here too is like, this has been without a doubt a community effort. And I mean, both papers were involved and newspapers were involved in promoting this. But I just want to really thank Kim. I mean, she's been with us every step of the way in promoting this and getting, getting this out to the community. So I just want to thank you for that. Also thank the chamber for all you've done. I mean, they're the ones that published all the PR and the, you know, all the pamphlets we've handed out, the envelopes. I mean, it's been, I always hate that term, it takes a village, but I, but whatever, it takes a village. So that's where we're at. I just, I just want to, there's so many people that have been involved in this. And it's like to finally see light at the end of the tunnel, to me, is pretty special. Because I feel like we've been talking about this for three years now. And quite frankly, I'm tired of talking about playgrounds, even though I love playgrounds.
Well, Brian, we should all thank you.
Well, I agree. It's everybody.
The work that you have done to make this thing real. And you're still beating the bushes.
Yeah. And I know this community will respond with the fundraising and attention to complete this project.
Agreed.
Yes, indeed. Okay, thank you. All right, our next item would be the Highlands Playhouse Demolition Bids. Mr. Josh Ward.
So we received requests for proposals for the demolition of the playhouse and the annex building. We're sent out the town board's request. Due to the amount of project, the bidding process was informal and did not require three bids. Two bids were received. Only one of the bids were acceptable. The acceptable bid was from Bryson Grading and Paving for $75,523.50. Attach as a budget amendment for approval if the board decides to move forward.
Okay. And let me add this. I met with Pam Carver last week, and she represents the playhouse. They were asking if it's possible, you know, if we move forward with this, there were those bricks with people's names on them. And even the possibility of, could they possibly salvage some of the chairs in the theater? I'd like for us, if we move forward with this, to build in and consider. I know that there's certain companies locally that can install a brick, and also they have the equipment to remove those bricks. And we could do that and give the playhouse folks those bricks for how they would like to, to use them from here on out. And I know this is a difficult situation, difficult decision. But I appreciate our town manager working on getting the bids, and I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Mayor, I actually had a fairly lengthy discussion with one of our distinguished residents here in town today who would be sorely aggrieved to see the playhouse building no longer there. And I was wondering, I know we, we've talked about this for a long time and beat the living daylights out of it. And certainly the word has gotten out, I would hope. But I wonder if there, as one last hurrah, so to speak, if we couldn't put out the word, attack it from a different angle, maybe entice someone with some naming rights of some sort that would be willing to, to put the money in to keep that building standing and make it into something that we all wish it had been 70 years ago. My response to that is, you know, if we, we went through that study with the architect, and at the time they estimated 2.6 million, are we going to put 2.6 or $3 million to retain that building, which basically, if you're going to use it for any functional purposes, has to be rebuilt? Or could that money be directed or that commitment to a new facility at the PAC or in some other direction? And that's just, just my, my feeling. I know that there's a lot of sentimental connection to that building. But after that report, it is pretty much, it would have to be completely taken down to the studs and then rebuilt for it to really have any functional use. So, you know, that's my response.
I'm sure that those studs would stay. They have to be made of now.
Yeah.
And I don't, I mean, that bid, what they estimated, I don't think it's anywhere.
No, I think it's, I think it's three and a half to accomplish what they were talking about. So I'm actually in agreement with Buzz partially. And what I, you know, we've been talking about it for a while. We got somebody to study it. We got somebody to look at the options. I have yet to hear anybody come up with what it would be used for. I, I've, you know, you know, you have people that make comments or say, I mean, I've heard people say it could be a museum. Well, we have one. We have a historical society and they do a phenomenal job in the Prince House. So what else would it be? I, I do not feel comfortable spending three point anything on that building, especially considering we have no foreseeable use for it. With that said, I'm not opposed, since I don't want to see July or August tearing down a building in the middle of downtown. There's too much disruption. You know, do it in the fall, do it the winter, whatever, if we end up doing it. But give the community, you know, say, community.
Last chance.
This is your last chance. Come up with ideas. Tell us what you can see and come up with a plan to raise the money. Because again, in it, you know, public, private. But keeping in mind that the property is, can't be used for anything other than town purposes, so to speak. I mean, there's of course the playhouse, but because of how it's deeded. But, yeah, so with that said, I think it's, I think we should give that opportunity. Like I said, I don't, I'm not trying to kick the can, but we've been talking about this for, y'all were talking about this before I got on this board. So we know the numbers roughly. We still don't know a use. You know, so I guess my, my con, my thought process is, you know, make it public. Let, let the papers get the word out. Put it on, you know, send us comments, send, you know.
One last chance.
This is your chance. I mean.
That's part of my problem is I think the vast majority of our constituents still don't have it into their head that this is what's about to happen.
Well, but.
The hammer's about to drop.
But I mean, to, so the comments that I've heard about it were, you know, a lot of people upset, but a lot of people defending the action and saying, you know, it's past the point of return. But with that said, not to just say that's the final conclusion and give the community a chance. But I also look at it, I don't, I'm not, you got to be careful about it because a lot of people knew that this was being discussed tonight, but there's nobody here.
Right.
So.
We've been, we've been discussing this now.
For two years.
Two years.
So.
And the person that I talked to today, I said, you need to show up to town board meeting today and make your case.
Right. So, I mean, they, they read enough to know that it's a possibility.
Sure.
But I'm, and I'm, it's not to their, you know, there's, I figured at least one or two would come tonight. I was kind of surprised. It wasn't completely, no offense, but empty house, relatively speaking. So I just think we should give them 60 days. Say, come in with ideas, come next, to the next meeting during public comment. Come with some ideas. Do what, I'm just, it's not going to hurt us to wait 30 or 60 days.
Right.
Because I'd love for the community to get involved. I'd love for the community to actually come in with great ideas and get a grassroots effort and make it happen. But it can't happen in five years. That building won't be standing in five years if nothing happens to it.
But a solution needs to be had.
Needs to be imminent.
Yeah.
So I'm just, that's my comment, not to necessarily table it, but I would encourage the community to come next week and give us your ideas. I mean, next, yeah, next month. We're not meeting next week, next month, and just give us your ideas, you know, and, and how you might propose making it happen.
Could be a good workshop maybe or.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, yeah, actually that would be even better. Make it the workshop or make it part of a workshop. May not be the whole workshop, but maybe more than a workshop.
This is where formal bids, there's no timeline on it.
I will go back, and I know I'm the villain here. We have been looking at this. We did our due diligence, and you agree that it's a $3 million project if people want to try to recreate a theater. I know the PAC Center is looking at the idea of expanding a small theater. The limitations on that property and everything, and the fact that no one has come forward with a viable alternative is, you know, I think it's time to move forward. But whatever the board wants to do, of course.
We'll be moving forward in 60 days.
I would agree with you on that one, but I think this is worth a shot.
And like I say, I did too much satisfying, so I turned it down this time.
Plus, even if you do, September's going to be better than.
Yeah, so I mean, just soon.
Well, unless you want to just have to get rid of the metal building first.
Well, actually, I thought about that, but then I'm like, if we're only doing 60 days, then just do it all at once. It'd be more cost effective.
Yeah.
The bid will change if it's done at two phases.
Is first the stipulation on using built nonprofit or like is there something specific that can or can't be on it?
Well, it can't be a for-profit business, I understand.
Nope.
So we have to be a non-profit, you said town.
The arts events, that was how the play, that was part of it.
Restrictions. I don't know exactly what they are. Josh probably knows.
It's definitely nonprofit. It means it's the arts.
Yeah.
Historical society. It means it's the arts.
Historical society.
Something with a, a general public use type thing. Because it is public property. You can't give a public asset.
Right.
So I just, like I said, I just think we encourage people to come and share your ideas. How are you going to make it happen? What's it going to be used for? How's it going to get paid for? And give them that last, last effort before getting rid of a, an old building, so to speak. I agree.
You want to put that in form of a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Give up to 60 days and encourage people at the next meeting to come during public comment and start the discussion.
But with the deadline of 60 days, because we're not going to drag this out forever. Yeah.
So.
Or work session. Sorry, I might back up on that.
I think we need to, to essentially make a decision whether to move forward at the next meeting.
Sure. I, I just, I agree completely.
If nobody shows up and they don't have any decent.
Let me, let me rephrase what I was going to say. I think we should, we should table the, the bid and encourage maybe part of our work session next week can be, have it be on there. Not the only one, the work session, no, next month, sorry. Next month, work session, and then it could be more of a discussion rather than, you know, public comment is supposed to be more of, we looked, we heard you, thank you. Yeah, statement. So I think part of the work session of one of the elements on the work session and encourage people to come. If you don't want to see it go, give us your ideas.
Second.
Got a second. All right. I'll call the question. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands, saying aye. All right, that's what we'll do. That's going to be incumbent upon the newspapers to. Your last chance.
Front page, Kim.
Kevin's got us covered too, so.
Yeah.
They both did. Perfect.
Okay. Our next item is the July 4 alcohol policy for Founder's Park. I'm going to ask Chief Holland to come up and give us a report about the situation that occurred on the 4th of July. Of also, we've talked with our town attorney about this issue, and he has some ideas he'd like to share with us also.
So I know everybody's familiar that on July 4, we do not allow alcohol in the park. A lot of people, it's prob, more probable than not that people have probably been drinking all day. So as long as I've been here, we've just never allowed it. We also know that everybody is drinking in the park. So the chamber has been diligent in hiring one of our officers that evening to try to control it as best we can. This year, I asked them to hire two of us. Generally, Captain McCall does it, and then I'm up here every 4th of July anyway. So I'll go down and assist because of the crowd of people. This year, they actually paid her and I to do security there. And what we found was, it's impossible. I can safely guestimate, guestimate that there was probably 2,000 people there on the 4th of July.
It's the fullest I've ever seen it.
It was the fullest. Everybody was commenting, even some people were leaving because there was just entirely too many people. And, and I've been asked if, if there's ever been a problem like at the Music Fest with drinking on the park, and the answer is no. We, I've never known a problem. However, on July 4, we experienced just a little bit of hiccup. When you know that everyone is, most people have alcohol in their cups, we, we can't go ask somebody what's in their cups. You know, if we see it in a clear cup, it looks like alcohol, then yes, we will approach and say, you can't have that. Is that alcohol? Yes, it is. You can't have it out here tonight. And they're pretty compliant. They, they say, okay, we didn't know. If we see a beer bottle, a liquor bottle, or wine bottle, we tell them they can't have it. We had a situation where we had told a gentleman that he couldn't have the alcohol. And he, he's, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. He goes over just a little over here and pours it into a clear cup. Okay, I see this, so I go back to address it. Sir, I just told you, you can't have that in the cup. And then the women of the family, one of them was, I guess, a police officer. And she said, I want to know what's going on. I'm a police officer. Then you ought to know to follow the rules. That's what I told her. So my point is, is it's not, we can't control it. When you've got 2,000 people down there and two officers, it, it puts the officers more in a dangerous situation when you're dealing with people that are consuming alcohol to tell them they can't have it. So I think that my, my, I think what I would like is just to allow it to happen on July 4 like we do on Pine Street, and maybe a time that's like 6:00 PM like we, we normally do.
Okay. And let me ask Nick to weigh in, because I think you have some observations about the alcohol policy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is more just on how we would go about handling this. So currently, there's a slight conflict between what your code of ordinance says and what your outdoor recreation policy says. So the, the, the code of ordinances in section 9.2 says that it's a permit that's issued by the town board for whether or not to allow alcohol. And it's one sentence, it's very, you know, very vague. And then the outdoor recreation policy that you all recently adopted and revised, that provides that it's the recreation director that, that issues a, a permit slash waiver and release agreement for alcohol events on Town Park. So, you know, I, I would, I would ask the board's decision on that just in terms of who should issue the permit. And then I would recommend that for these, that we comply with both the, the policy and the ordinance by issuing a permit that has waiver and release language in, that, you know, ensures that whoever it is that's issued the permit, they're the ones that are in charge of security and, and everything like that. And that, and that the town is relieved of liability as it relates to these events where alcohol is being consumed.
So on the concert nights where we allow, bring your own, the permit would, for example, go to the sponsoring agency, which would be the chamber?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
And they would sign, you know, waiver and release language and everything like that. And you all can, you know, we can put in there what, what you would like to see from a security or, you know, any type of those provisions.
Okay. I, I asked the chief to bring this up now because it is an issue. And the good news is, though, we have time. We're, we're operating under certain things now into this season. We have time to work with our town attorney and everything to come up with a improved policy. Policy and. Directive on this.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of just allowing it, cuz you say, people say, well, I didn't know. But there may be some people who do know that it's not allowed. And now you're saying, oh, no, you can do it. Whereas that's gonna be, make, make it more of a situation. This is more of a. Family oriented.
Well, so, so are the Saturday nights. There's kids, hula hoops and bikes and scooters and it's.
But, but it, there's not two thousand people.
No, but.
I mean, those things can get out of hand quickly. And alcohol only makes it work.
That I, and I do agree, and I think that we can all agree that I've tried to, as best I can fight this, even. You know, years past, but it, we can't even get through the crowd. We could not even walk through this crowd on, on July fourth. We couldn't make it through anymore.
But other than the gentleman that.
That was it.
Deb, I mean, they had to drink and then he went over somewhere else and poured a drink. He, he was, what, what happened after that?
Oh, they, she just told us, I mean, it was nothing other than harassing their family. She appreciate. It was, it was just someone speaking their mind, which people are allowed to do. There, it, that was the only situation we had, but. It's, we're going around telling people you can't have it when everybody has it. So. I mean, you, you, you can go around issuing all kinds of ordinance violations, but in reality, I, I think my concern is more of. All right, we're, we're paid to control this or, you know, even the town wants us to control this. But then that's also our responsibility to walk through two thousand people with two officers. Yes, it's highlands, but I just fought someone at a motel a while ago. My face is red. That's probably scratched. So things happen here. And so, and if that puts us, if we're there just monitoring it and then we're at one side and we're at the other, at least we're at the side. Not allowing anyone to leave with it like we do at Pine Street. Or during the Music Fest. The Music Fest is, is, is easy. If anyone. If any of you here, you know that we walk around, we converse with people, we're able to maneuver through the crowd. Whereas if you've seen any of the videos or the pictures from July fourth, we could not maneuver through the crowd. So we could not effectively. Do our due diligence to control this issue.
If you left it like, left the policy in place, but just like any other of, of our ordinances where it's complaint driven. And then obviously, if you had to respond to a, whether it was a fight or whatever happens when someone's like fueled with alcohol. Then that person would be obviously arrested and charged with whatever public drunkenness. But at the same time, you're not walking around being like, you gotta drop or, you know, dump that out, dump that out. You know, you don't. You're not, you're only enforcing the complaints and the issues.
Well, but, but the problem is.
Creating more of a liability for the town too.
Well, that's the question. Yeah, that's the question.
You know, if, if we're saying you're not allowed and they're doing it and stuff and they're trying, when they're like, why didn't you have sufficient? Uh, enforcement and stuff. They can't do that.
Well, you had officers out there and they weren't controlling this drinking problem. Now you. Could we be liable because we can't control it? We're not controlling it.
We, like, oh, I'm saying, I just really do allow and stuff and you put the waiver on chamber and that sort of stuff. It gets it off the towns.
I would have, that would be a dick question.
I know. My only concern is, is that because everybody's doing it and there's just so many people and I feel like I'm not doing my due diligence. Or my job because I'm, I quit walking around. At some point, I told the captain, I said, we're not going through this crowd anymore. We're gonna sit here in my patrol car. We're gonna have somebody over at the other end. We're gonna make sure they don't leave. And that's the best we can do at this point. We just can't even get through to get to them.
Well, but, but if you see somebody with it.
Yeah.
You, you're, and it, and you know it's not allowed, then technically you, you're supposed to do something about it.
Correct.
But if it's allowed and they're being completely compliant and calm and enjoying the fireworks, then it takes, I'm not saying the pressure off, but. Um, but I also remember this conversation when the whole music in the park started in the first place. And there was a lot of concern that it was gonna be wild and crazy and there's gonna be fights and all stuff. We've never had an issue. Ever. So.
But the thing is, is if you do, then we actually have some, an ordinance that, that can be used to. Tell them not to break.
Well, we have criminal laws to back us up to anything. If someone gets belligerent or anything like that. I mean. We can use a criminal law rather than just an ordinance.
Being rowdy and drunk and creating a problem and actually committing crime.
And what's the difference between like the noise ordinances, like, like y'all respond to a noise ordinance complaint, but y'all don't drive around looking for noise ordinances. Right? I mean, it's no different than that.
Yeah.
I would also say there's a disconnect here to me. Um, we have the music in the park on Saturday. And people all know you can bring your own alcohol. On the Fourth of July, we now have music and everybody thinks, well, this is a concert and then we're, we're, we're gonna bring our alcohol. So it, it's, it's hard to, to shift gears and say, oh, no, not on the Fourth of July, but you're okay on Saturday. It's, it's just a.
I already done.
Disconnection.
Cuz people just, they assume when you're allowed every Saturday night for those concerts and stuff, and then you have something like the Fourth of. They just assume it for the most part.
And we had new signs made up that says no alcohol for July fourth. I don't know if any of y'all have seen our new signs. Uh, I made an announcement when I could get through the crowd, uh, a couple of times. Pick up your trash, please. And I just wanna remind you that you cannot have alcohol out here tonight. It just got so big that it was like. You know, if you guys are good, that we're just monitoring.
For problems.
For problems, but you're still allowing something that you're not allowing. If we're just monitoring, if we're gonna monitor, can we not just monitor?
Cuz, I mean, to me, it's, it's, to me, it doesn't make sense to say, well, if there's not a problem, just let them do it. And then it's not allowed. That seems odd to me or go about the other way. No, but, but you do have people out there with a beer bottle. You have people out there pouring wine in people's cups. And, and my point about it is. It's, it's allowed on Saturday nights. If it's on the Fourth of July and it's allowed, and then you all can just monitor issues. Not having to monitor what people have in their hands or what is, that cooler has something to wait till they open it and I see a beer bottle. I mean.
But I see it more as a tool in their toolbox to be used if there is a problem.
That's how I see it, yeah.
That, that they can say, well, you're not allowed to have alcohol here, you know, you're being rowdy, you're drunk, whatever it is. That's just one more tool that they can use to stop whatever is going on. Um, uh, without just saying, you know, yeah, you're allowed to be drunk here.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, allowing drinking doesn't mean you're allowed to be drunk.
Yeah, there's criminal law. I mean, I just arrested somebody for public drunk. Drunk and disrupt. I just did. So there is that tool in our, and, you know, if they get rowdy and they start cursing and. And things like that, we have that. So, and, and no, I'm not all for it, believe me, but I'm just thinking. In, in a broader picture of that, if, and, and this person, when, when, when she had the conversation with me, she, she's correct. She's like, you're telling us we can't have it. But I know all these people over here do have it and you're not saying anything to them. Well, they didn't go pour it right in front of me. And that was, you know, my comment. So, but everybody is, and she is right. Everybody is.
You get stopped for speeding and everybody else is speeding too. And you're writing a ticket to one and not to the other twelve that were in the. Snake line.
True.
What's the least criminal, uh, offense, so to speak? If, if you've got a, a group of folks, what, what's the least they have to do that you could?
Are you looking for advice, Buzz? Are you looking?
As a matter of fact. No, I mean, what is some, what's, what's the very least somebody has to do to be in violation? Not of a town ordinance, but for you to put them in handcuffs or you to throw them in the car or you to.
Just to go up there and tell them to stop.
Or something.
I will give you portion of the definition. I cannot give advice or give you that information. However. If, you know, if someone's cursing in a public place where, where there's other people, then that could be drunk and disruptive.
Could you then order them to pour the alcohol out?
I do. We do. We make them pour it out.
It's kind of a level and if they want.
If we know what it is, we have them pour it out. Can't do that.
The only thing though, playing devil's advocate of what I was saying and kind of what Amy's saying though too is. If, say for instance, you just allowed it and somebody got disruptive and was in it, say they got in a fight for whatever, or whatever. There is another, like you would get arrested for something else, like getting in a fight, whatever that is, like disruptive behavior. That's, there's still an offense there that's not associated with drinking, correct? So, I don't know. It's.
Well.
Like from that perspective, I don't know.
Well, I, I think not allowing it on Fourth of July is confusing, but I think it's also, and then coming up with the scenarios of what could happen, even though it's never happened before. Um, is kind of a solution in search of a problem. You know, we're, we're not, we've not had a problem. We've not had a problem. It's not been an issue. I, I've been down there on Fourth of July, walked through, et cetera. And, I mean.
My only problem though is if somebody killed somebody on the way home in a car accident. That's where I have, I just, I don't know. If somebody gets killed on the way home, driving home for fireworks, I have an issue with that.
Of course. We all do, but it's not our problem. Yeah, their responsibility.
But again, I think that's a solution in search of a problem.
I don't think that we're, you know, it's not like we're serving them. So you'd go to a bar, you're over served, they're responsible. And I think that's a question for the, for the attorney, but, um, it's. Like what you're saying, we're allowing it on one day and, and not another day.
Well.
It's an uncontrollable situation.
Correct.
But we're allowing it at a time when we expect it to be. Everybody should be able to come down there and have a good time and see the fireworks and everything else. If I don't wanna go to the Saturday night concerts, cuz there's a bunch of drunk sprawlers. But this is the Fourth of July and I'd love to come down and do that, but I don't feel, uh, comfortable because everybody's walking around drunk or.
Well, but.
They are anyway.
Yeah, but.
They are anyway, but I'm just saying you need that tool to be able to say.
They're not walking around drunk.
They're not, no, they're not like falling down drunk. Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I've, I've been down there in the park almost every Fourth of July, not for the fireworks, but up until that point. And I've never witnessed somebody just like, gosh, that guy needs to go home.
That's always a potential. I'm not saying that the potential is, or what they should be doing is ticketing everybody there. I'm just saying. I don't want them to suddenly say, well, we're allowed to do this, you know, and I'm not really that drunk. Without them being able to say, you, you, you need to settle down here and I need to take that away from you.
And, and obviously, whatever you guys decide, we're gonna abide by it. Just know that I'm here telling you that I cannot control it. Uh, I, I can't control it. I can try my best, but that's all I can give you.
Nick, can you weigh in one more time and just tell us what you think here?
Yeah, sure. So a couple of things. First is, um, it's important to remember that. The, the, the town is not serving any alcohol. And so there's not, there's not the liability associated with that. Now. To answer the question about liability as it relates to if something happens at a, an event. That is a city run, or sorry, a town run event or a, uh, you know, on town property at a town park. You know, that is the whole point of, of issuing a special permit or a permit is because you, you, there's a waiver and release. Where that is being put to the person that's being issued the, the, the permit. So that's the first thing that I just wanna address. The second thing is. You know, Nor- North Carolina has different. A lot of people think that like the over-serving thing, that is something that North Carolina has. That's actually not the law in North Carolina. It's all about minors, serving minors or, or allowing minors to get alcohol, et cetera. So, um. That, you know, just wanted to address that. But, um, I think kind of what I'm hearing from the board is that. You know, they wanna make sure that they're issuing a permit that has a waiver and release that for, and, and says. You know, that alcohol is allowed, but only under these circumstances. And if somebody does not get a permit for an event, then, then alcohol is not allowed. And you can, you can, you know. Basically go after them for the fact that they didn't get a permit and yet alcohol is, is occurring on, on the, you know, at the event that they're sponsoring. Does that answer the question or are there other specific questions?
But like, I, I guess like the first point, I guess where I have a problem, it's like, I don't wanna just push it off on the chamber and be like, oh, it's your event. You're, you're buying fireworks. Then it's your issue. Like that's, they're like, this is a joint, sort of a joint venture here regardless of whose event it is. So, I mean. Is it better to not have a, just not have a policy or is it better to have a policy?
Uh, well, that's what I'm looking for, for the board is, is some direction on, you know, do you want it, what, what your code said, which is that the, the board issues a permit? Or, and that's all it says for, for consuming alcohol at events on town, in town parks? Or do you want to go with what your policy says and, and, and we can tweak the ordinance to be more. Which is more specific about waiver and release. You have to do it sixty days in advance. You know, you have to submit, uh, you know, an application for it sixty days in advance. And, uh, you know, the recreation director issues it. It doesn't have to be approved by the town board. So, I mean, that's. I think that's kind of what the board needs to give some direction on is how they wanna handle it.
But, well. I thought we just.
Talking, I can't hear.
Didn't we just change that?
To the town.
Yeah, to the town board. We don't, we don't wanna put that on Lester. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, be honest with you. He doesn't need to be the one. Yeah, Lester doesn't want it on Lester. But.
And there was one other event that we just had, the art show, where they asked permission from the board. To serve alcohol, a ticketed alcohol event from three o'clock till six o'clock. And I know, Chief, you were there as the observing officer. No problems.
No. Yeah, I don't, yeah, no.
Rained for the first hour, but.
That's correct. I was here, walking around.
Between the, the number of that crowd and the number of a.
I, I don't disagree.
Fourth of Ju- the Fourth of July is just, well, you couldn't walk through it. So it's obviously mayhem.
It was mayhem.
I just feel like this is a bigger issue than just, um, the Fourth of July. I feel like this is something, maybe, do we need to revisit that ordinance and just?
We need to make sure the terminology and the wording is consistent between the two areas. But. But, um, and we have a lot of time to talk about Fourth of July.
Sure, but that's why I wanted, um.
It's a good topic.
Start looking. But I think we also need to, to revisit, uh, our, our permitting process with whoever it is. That's leasing the park, so to speak. And they, they need to be the folks that are, that are absolutely held in jeopardy. If anything happens, no matter what. I mean, it doesn't matter whether you're drinking beer, drinking wine. Or mainlining Jack Daniels. Yeah, alcohol is alcohol and, and the, the possibility of overdoing it. Needs. Yeah. That problem needs to be somebody else's, not ours. Here's the nuance, nuance, and I know y'all are concerned about the chamber's liability. In the case of the, um, concerts, they're not selling alcohol.
Yeah.
They're just putting on a concert and people decide how much they bring and how much they're gonna drink. So I, I, I see the concern that should the chamber be, you know, liable for someone just coming to the concert? Who happened to bring their own alcohol versus at the art show, I will tell you, the art show. You had to have tickets. I had two. But you have to have tickets. And that is kind of a controlling factor.
Control.
Because they would not let you buy more than what, three, Chief, or two?
I'm not sure.
They, they had a limit.
Did they have a limit?
Yeah. But that, that's not gonna cure somebody from showing up at the art show. Absolutely zonked. No, but that's, you come prepared and then you top it off.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, what you're trying to do is control the situation. It's absolutely uncontrollable. Okay, I think, I think what we need to do is, um, have our town attorney review what we have now. And, and maybe work with the chief and the town manager and then come back.
I think that's a legal argument. I think that the thing is, is, is do we want to have. Twenty-five hundred people drunk on our town property. Where the, that basically makes other people not be able to have a good time because we have said, come on and party.
Drinking and being drunk are different things.
I, I go to concerts, okay? And I bring a bottle of wine. And, and, and here's the thing. I don't sit there and chug it and stagger around. I might have a little thing with my picnic and everything. That's what most people do. They're not there.
Yeah, but a lot of these people that are here for the Fourth of July are here for the Fourth of July and no other time. They're not, they're not part of.
Well, yeah.
Community. It's, it's coming in here for a Saturday night concert that they can get every Saturday night. It is the Fourth of July and they come for that.
Yeah, but my.
They come to party.
My experience for Fourth of July is, and I'm talking about people in town. My experience for Fourth of July, if I have, I mean, currently I have fifty-four current active clients. I would be willing to bet that fifty of them were here with their kids and grandkids.
Yeah.
And that's why town's full. They were in their second homes. They didn't come and stay in a hotel. Now hotels were busy. But it's that full and I have other friends that have homes that they always come for Fourth of July.
But I also.
That's why it's so busy. So what I'm, what I'm getting at with that is it's not. That's why it's so busy. So, what I'm, what I'm getting at with that is, it's not, it's not transients coming through and getting drunk and going to hang out at the park. It's, it's the families, it's the grandkids, it, it really is, and I don't think whether you can serve it. We've never had a problem on the 4th of July with alcohol-related problems, even though everybody will admit, everybody is drinking. I'm, I'm just saying they are.
I don't, I don't assume that you've never had a problem. The magnitude of the problem may be different, but that sounded like a problem to me.
It's just somebody's agitated because I was telling them they couldn't have alcohol, and I wasn't telling everybody else, but we were constantly, uh, look, uh, Captain McCall and I were constantly going around telling people, you can't have that, you can't have that, and, and most people were like, okay. And, but then it just got to the point we couldn't get through, um, so, and I, that was the most people I'd ever seen. So, that's why we just, I had spoke to Josh, the mayor, that this is getting bigger. The music's out there. Cacher's is having theirs the night before, so all, a lot of these people came from Cacher's, and probably from, uh, probably maybe Raven County, I'm not sure, but I know that a lot of people were from Cacher's, a lot of people probably from Highlands. I didn't recognize but about 10 people.
But I, you're, you're looking at it a little bit differently. Like, I could see how overwhelming for you, because you show up on scene, there's two of you, 2,000 people, and everybody's, uh, you know everybody's drinking, not that everybody's drunk, so I mean, that's a different, a little different scenario. So, yeah, the question then is, I think it just kind of goes back to the ordinance, but.
Yeah.
Well, this is a, a wide-open discussion that I brought about here.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, that's, that's what should we, how do we resolve this? I don't think we can do it tonight. Um.
We got another year.
We have a year.
Yes, maybe we can have. We can have Josh, the chief, and Nick, um, continue to review this, and then come back with some more specific options for the board to consider.
Quit letting the music in, where there's no music, probably limited alcohol.
Okay, thank you, Chief, thank you, Nick.
All right, thank you.
All right, that gets to the end of our agenda. If there's no, no other discussion. Got a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
All right, good night.